Call the meeting order at 7:01. Do it all, please write for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Ah, more if you would, take the roll, please. Call the roll.
Louis?
Here.
Landwear?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
And Superintendent Kathy Kelly?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And we have next up is the agenda approval and adjustments. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
Someone?
Molly?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion reports and information items, first up is the strategic plan, strategic direction.
Good evening Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. This evening Director Stenvik and I will be presenting strategic direction A and B. And it says 2014-15 because it's last year's, mostly last year's data. As always, starting with the mission statement of creating worlds of opportunity for every learner. And the core values that I think we can focus on here is excellent and innovation. Obviously, we strive for creating excellent programming for our students and we expect excellent results. And there's a lot of innovative programming happening. Just to kind of start the same way we did last year, I think in previous as we've presented this, is just kind of looking at our demographics and where we currently stand. And this data is pulled right off of MDE's site. Our demographics rate this variance might be slightly different than this, but this is a pretty accurate snapshot. And then you can see our free and reduced. I think if we looked at it right now, we did tip over eighty percent, Bill. If we looked at it right now, but as last reported to MDE, this is what, what we have is seventy-nine point five percent. So you can see we're very high with our free and reduced, as we all know. And I think, I'll just let Xena kick off with strategic vision card A.
So moving to strategic vision card A, under the section of instruction. In A1, using articulated standards-based curriculum, we are at level five. And then the rest of the areas, A2, 3, and 4, around engaging in PLCs, teachers using, collecting and using formative data to drive their instruction. And then the use of effective teaching strategies are all at a level four. One thing that we are honing in on this year in terms of instructional practices are some of those instructional strategies. So for example, in August, we kicked off the year with pre-K 12 teachers, so everyone in the district learning about creating positive classroom environments and how to set up those classrooms and a few different strategies that they got to try out, so that we're trying to speak the same language as we go across the district. Moving to A5 and A6, so this is looking at using twenty, or the presence of Twenty-First Century Learning in the classroom at level four. And then the percentage of teaching staff at the basic, or at the proficient level, basic for non-tenured, basic and proficient for non-tenured, and then proficient and distinguished for tenured teachers were at the level five vision.
And that is pretty much, it's the same where it was last year, so it wasn't a change.
Thanks. Okay, moving to the next section. For, you can see A7, presence of multi-tiered intervention for academics. We're at a level three here. This fluctuates slightly from year to year, depending on where the need is and the supports. A8, presence of multi-tiered interventions for behavior. This is something that we are trying to make sure that we're being proactive on, and so at a level four. Presence of elements of STEAM curriculum, we're at a level two there. This is in part due to some engineering changeover that we've had at the academy. And then A10, presence of AVID in grades nine through twelve. And as you know, we've expanded grade levels, but we're at level five there. And then A11, parent involvement. This is part, this is points of, some of the points of contact for parent involvement at a level three, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes when we get to the next one. All right. Continuing with strategic vision card A. So this page is really about participation, the first three, so part 12, 13, and 14, participation in students in not only athletics, but athletics and activities, and really making sure that we've got kids out there and kids participating after school and on the weekends and at different times. We had a drop last year, a decrease in elementary, and that's due to the change in the encore program. So as you recall, in previous years, we had the Twenty-First Century Grant and were able to offer extensive after-school programming. So we saw a slight decrease there. And so we're working to think about what are some other ways that we can engage the young ones? And then the others remain the same. A15, again, is around parent involvement, parent engagement, and the different points of contact for parent engagement. And so this is something that we wanted to take a close look at. And just looking, so for example, in early childhood, they have one-hundred percent communication with parents, with all of their parents. Eighty-eight percent of their families attend the parent-teacher conferences, so they're able to come to the sites. Across the elementary schools, they have upwards of eighty percent of their families attending conferences. And if parents can't attend conferences, they're reaching out to them to give those check-ins. They have different family nights at the different school, at the different elementary schools. This year, new Valley View teachers are recording a phone log, and that's submitted every week to the administration, so they want to see, promote positive parent communication. Of course, the PTOs at all of the schools and the newsletters go out. And one area that we're finding increased parent communication is around the AVID binders. So third graders, fourth graders, fifth graders at both Highland and North, or in Valley View. The kids have to write in their planners every single day. What did they do? What was the work that they did? They write a reflection. Sometimes they write what their goal is, and parents are asked to sign it every single night. And so when I go into the classrooms and I open up students' binders and take a peek, I can see communication between the parents and the teacher. So little notes back and forth. So that's been kind of a simple, but really powerful way to increase that communication with parents. Columbia Academy, similar to Valley View, are, they're logging two positive parent phone calls a week, and that is, that's kept centrally. Each week, the administration asks for that information, so we can see, of course, using Schoology and Schoolview and online tools, Moodle at the high school, parents have access to a lot of information that way and communication. This year, Columbia Academy has started, as you know, they're, as Principal Burkus says, their mantra is "rise up." And so they've started recognizing "rise up" qualities in students through their rise-up breakfasts, and parents come to that as well. Reach is still continuing, and the expectation that AVID binders are signed every single night is there as well at Columbia Academy. I have a long list of different things that are happening at the high school as well. Some I've already mentioned with PTO, coffee with the principal, use of Schoolview has increased. They're tracking their conference attendance and really reaching out to families. Of course, Principal Robleski does the weekly all-call to provide information that way. And he is online on Facebook and on Twitter and providing information out that way as well. Okay, and strategic direction A, this is participation of early childhood, really looking at resident students who are screened, and we're at the level five.
So, and the scorecards for these directions and kind of figuring out where we are is, as far as a final score compared to last year, gets a little tricky because they're a little bit longer. There's weighted formulas for each one, and they're different than the rest of the strategic directions. But you can see that, and if I would have included last year, or the previous year as well, that we've kind of ticked up, moving the needle forward a little bit each year on strategic direction A. It's not a lot, it's incremental, but I mean, really what we're shooting for is growth and moving forward. We're not going to see a level three to suddenly a level five, it just doesn't work that way. We, we, we understand that we can only move a little bit at a time, but we just want to keep seeing that move forward. We've moved, you know, there's, there's always areas that kind of go back and forth a little bit, but as a whole, we want to see the direction moving forward. And currently with A, we are seeing that.
All right, so we will move to vision card B, innovating, to close the achievement gap. Here, B1 and B2 is looking at NWEA MAP, and as mentioned in previous weeks, this is currently an assessment used at second grade due to the OPA, and we've talked about the OPA is that practice test for the MCA. So you can see there, for grade two, at a level one. This is a decrease from the previous year, and so we are really carefully studying the curriculum and the instruction this year. It's a slight decrease, and as Brian mentioned, we want to tick up every single year. B3, and looking at the percentage of students by the student groups and the differences between the student groups, we're at progressing level four. And then also looking at CBMs, students who are monitored on a regular basis with the cognitively-based measures, so that we can provide those interventions where needed. That's happening at a level four as well. B5 and B6 are looking at proficiency, MCA proficiency scores. The scores have really not moved since last year overall, though we are seeing pockets of growth and acceleration, and we want to continue with those upticks. With B8, looking at the gaps in reading and math. So look, according to the data, we're narrowing gaps as we are making that incremental growth. This page, so B9, 10, 11, and 12, focus on ACT, so for our high school students. So last year was the first year that one-hundred percent of our juniors took the ACT assessment at school. In previous years, it was a choose-two for students, and so we had everyone in the pool. So for B9 and proficiency, that put us at a level one. However, when we look at the equity reports from the ACT, that puts us at a level four. And that just means it's due to more of our kids and all of our kids participating. As you can see, participation was at the level five. And then the average score is at a level two. This page, 13, 14, and 15, looks at behavior referrals. So as you can see, at a level two for out-of-class and out of, and then the, between the groups, so the number of out-of-class and then the gaps that are out-of-class. And then a B15 is out-of-school suspensions. You can see at a level one. This is another area what that, for this year, again, this is data from last year. So for this year, in preparation, we've very carefully studied the data and are trying to be as proactive as possible in terms of providing increased social work, mental health supports, in order to be proactive. At Columbia Academy, they've hired a check and connect, which is new this year, and the administration down there is starting a mentoring program. Those of us at the district office are included in being able to go down there and meet with some of the students that might help to avoid in advance some behaviors.
And just to note, on these three, over the last three years' worth of data, so last year and the previous two years, we've seen improvement in all three areas. So, and like in the referrals out-of-class, we have moved from a level one to a level two, so we have seen improvement in these areas. Obviously, they're not where we want them to be, but we definitely are continuing to see improvement in these areas.
Okay, this page is looking at B16, advanced placement. So students who are taking, not only take, we have seen a vast increase of the students taking an AP exam and class. However, for B16, we're in level two. This is number of kids taking the assessment and scoring a three or higher. So again, we're moving in the right direction there. On track to graduate, we're at level three. And then the graduation rate is, is not meeting the top twenty-five percent in the state. And then B19, as we've seen an increase, the Department of Education is now able, helps us to track students entering college. So you can see between seventy and seventy-nine percent of students entered into college, and that was within, the measure is within sixteen months after graduation, is what's provided with us. And then of course, B20, we work very hard in AVID to ensure that the students are accepted to college, and so that's at the level five vision.
So overall, and we've seen a little bit of larger improvement in strategic direction B. You know, though, we talked about some of our scores, they're roughly the same as they have been, we haven't seen a lot of, a lot of uptick there, and we see a lot more improvement here. But some of the things like the SLEDs data that we have now, and we're looking at that sixteen-month model, that's just one example of, you know, moving us forward. We've jumped in that area, so there has been a couple areas like that that we've jumped that has moved us from that forty-six to fifty-nine percent. So, you know, keep ticking those scores up and we'll reach that level three and just kind of keep, continue moving forward. So it's another area that we continue to tick up and keep pushing forward.
Areas that we're focusing in on, a few areas across the district, with Valley View and Highland being in continuous improvement, so providing extra support there. Across the district, Twenty-First Century Critical Thinking Skills and Other Life Skills. We want to ensure that, that it's a living document, that life skills document in our webpage, that it's into our classrooms, and so we're doing a lot of talking around, what does that mean? And how are we ensuring that our kids are able to think critically, so that when they are faced with challenging problems on their assessments, that they're able to grapple with them and tackle those problems. And then reading and literacy across the content areas has been a big focus for us as well. Some of our celebrations, Valley View was an AVID showcase site for national training. Columbia Academy kind of restructuring with the rise up, and then they're no longer on continuous improvement, so they were removed from that list because of the work, the incremental work that's been happening. And then, of course, we're very much celebrating our eleven advanced placement scholars at the high school. So if there are any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Just have a comment. I guess what really concerns me is the ACT scores being so low. I mean, I understand that this is the first year that everyone's taking the ACT, but as a predictor of college and career readiness, and I'm not saying anybody thinks this is acceptable, because I certainly don't think it's acceptable to be this low, but just want to comment that, that I think is a good indicator of how well we're doing to meet our goal of being college and career readiness. And so I'd be looking at that with special interest on how well we do in the, in the future on ACT. And I think the state's recognized that as well, as being an indicator.
I have a question, that's about the prep, the prep classes that are, are being offered now, and we're doing the math this year and-
At the high school?
In the high school, yeah. In preparation for doing the ACTs, and that's been implemented at just the freshman level or was it sophomore?
So this year, we have three sections of ninth-grade math support classes in preparation for early college, and that will definitely help with the ACT, yes. And then next year would move to continuing ninth-grade math support and then adding the 10th-grade support for English, which will be really beneficial, not just for English classes, but also all of that critical reading that they're doing in social studies and science and the other content areas as well.
Yeah, have we thought about maybe doing something at the, the academy level in preparation for high school?
Yep, so this year is the first year that the academy has AVID in sixth grade.
Yeah.
And so we will increase that and grow that, and we really wanted to start, it's a little bit different from the high school where there's an AVID class and it's a group of students. We didn't want to do that at the academy, we wanted all of the sixth graders to have AVID strategies, and so they all have it.
Mr. Chair and members, I just wanted to respond to the ACT. The ACT is only one predictor for college and career readiness, it is something that the state has taken on to enhance rigor in the state. I think when you look at Columbia Heights Public Schools, though, you also have to look at how the students at the high school are doing in their college and the schools' classes, how they are doing in their AP tests, and how they do when they attend the PSEO. Because then if we take everything in perspective, it puts more weight to where we're, where we're trying to go. With ACT, I would agree that this was not probably where any of us would like it to be, and I think the state, when they took the measure, said, "We're going to do it regardless, because it's the right thing to do." And so we will be working on that, but when you look at the total package, I think that you'll find many of our students not only get to college, but remain in college. And we'll look at some of that with the SLEDs data on how many of them actually matriculate all the way out, and we'll follow them for the next four years. Thank you.
I also want to say, I'm very excited about the AVID success and, you know, the strategy of having parents look at the logbooks every night. I think that that, when we talk about parent engagement, that, that is a high level, and so anyway, I just, I'm excited about that. Makes a lot of sense.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is school board meeting date changes. Superintendent Kelly?
Well, Mr. Chair and members, January and February, it's scoping out to be a little bit different than we thought it was going to be when we looked at the beginning of the school year. So if you are looking at, we, the action, the information item, we need some changes. January 26 was our regularly scheduled meeting, and it has to be canceled due to a special election A, which is a law, that we can't hold a school board meeting on a general election eve night. The same is true for February 9, because we had a regular meeting scheduled there, and it's special election B primary, so both of those meetings had to be canceled. Given that, we have some changes that we think will work from the standpoint of compacting things on some nights that we're already meeting, and trying to make sure that we're not scheduling things on nights where the WMEP board or the 916 board would be meeting.
It's just changed?
Okay, well, we're going with their original dates, so.
Okay.
And, so if we start there, January 19, we changed the work session to a regular school board meeting, starting at seven o'clock. And what the management team is thinking is that anything that probably would have been in a work-study information item, we'll just put on as an information item that night. So you'll be getting the same information, it'll just be in a different format, and, and then that will also allow us to do some action items, because I know that Bill is very concerned that with some of the action items in the finance end, that we have regular scheduled meetings to keep pushing them forward. January 28 is our canvassing meeting. That occurs two, two days after the vote has been taken on the 26th. And so for those of you that were at the last canvassing meeting, the county, Cindy, will be here, and she can turn that around, she says, in two days, and so we would meet and do that, which would allow us, then we would not have to meet on February 2, which was a, a date for 916. However, so that would complete the January dates. February 16, we have to add a canvassing date for the February 9 primary election, to canvas those elections, and that would be at 5:30. And the reason that it is at 5:30 is because we have other things going on that evening, so it would just be a tag-on to other meetings, and I'll talk about that in a minute. February 16, we have to add a subcommittee on policy at six o'clock to that. And on February 16, we could change the work study to a regular meeting, starting at seven o'clock, for some of the same reasons that I talked about with the last work study. Changing things into information items and then allowing for action items if we needed them. These changes in dates would really be an action item at our January 5 organizational meeting, but I wanted to make sure, because many of you have to plan ahead for multiple things, that these are the dates. I also wanted you to turn to the next page and take a look at, there should be the school board meeting date, so you actually know what's facing you in January and February. Because if you look at that, we start with the organizational meeting on January 5. And then on the 12th, we have our sub, first subcommittee on school board policy and our regular school board meeting that night. On January 19, we have a school board listening session, we have a regular school board meeting. And then on January 28, we have the canvassing meeting. On February 16, it's a, I don't know, it's a quadruple header. We have the school board listening session at five, the canvassing meeting at 5:30, the subcommittee on policy at six, and the regular school board meeting at seven. But it's better to move them all into one night than to try to put those together all on different nights. And then February 23, we conclude with a regular school board meeting on the 7th. So that's what the total picture would look like. And I just wanted to make sure you had that for your planning calendars. A lot of this stuff was on your calendars already, so we just piggybacked on top of it. But I just wanted to make sure that you had, you had that information well in advance. I guess I should add, I want to thank the county for turning around our results so quickly for us, because they've really been easy to work with as far as turning things around. It also helps that we are the only game in town. But Cindy has been very, very helpful with that. That concludes mine.
Just in talking about the, the listening sessions, the notes that I have, and maybe Dawn, sometime between now and then you can confirm, but I have that Ted and Laura would be doing the January 19 meeting. We'll have a couple meetings before that, but just when we went through and we kind of redid things, and if that's, if that's incorrect on, if you would let it, I guess we'll know now.
I just want to mention, I'm not quite sure that I'll be able to commit to that January 28, unfortunately, because I will be out of town. Okay. So I know that numbers are of concern. I'm a little bit worried about that. Are the three of you able to, for that canvassing? I don't know how you want to do that.
If we have three, we're okay.
I just want to put that out there now.
I actually do have a question, though. Don't we immediately swear in the, the new board member? Aren't they immediately sworn in after the, after the election certified?
At the next board meeting, if they accept the position.
If they accept the position, okay.
Last question? It is Molly.
I think we're going to have that member discussion being, we're going to wait till the next, till we seated the person and then allow them to have an opportunity to be a part of that. Okay. So it is Laura and Ted on the 19th. Okay. Thank you.
So Ted, does the 28th work for you?
It'll work for me.
Okay, so then we, okay, so it looks like we have three.
Okay.
Mind of order, I apologize. I have the old, last week's meeting up on my computer. If someone could bring this week's meeting up, that would be great.
Really? Oh.
Dawn to the rescue.
Thank you. I've been trying to figure out how to bring it up, but I can't.
Oh, January's going to be busy.
I'm just going to have to pull it up in Board Book.
Okay.
It might take longer to cache, but.
I think the 916 meeting's on a Wednesday. And we just got confirmation of that.
Wednesday.
It's like the 13th.
It's not Wednesday, different with us.
Yeah, if it's on a Wednesday, it's fine. Everything else is on Tuesday and Thursday.
And then pulls it up, so it's already cached, but it might just take a little longer to cache.
I believe you can.
Thank you.
Huh?
Thank you.
Good care, let's move it forward.
20th is what?
WMEP is the next thing.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move forward to our action items. First up is the West Metro Education Program. Board will be asked to approve a letter of intent to West Metro Education Program. I thought what I would do is, you guys want to talk first and then I'll read the resolution? Okay.
Chairman Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. Last week, we had a board meeting and we had a relatively long discussion about WMEP. And we're here tonight looking for action on what we talked about last week. So you're really based on our prior discussion, you see a resolution in your board packet for the intent to withdraw from WMEP. And we are at the, the recommendation of the administration to withdraw from WMEP and that resolution is before you.
Motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura? Looking for a second by Molly. Okay, I'll read the resolution and then we'll have discussion. So resolution approving withdrawal of Columbia Heights Public Schools from the West Metro Education Program. Whereas the West Metro Education Program, WMEP began as a collaboration among surrounding suburban school districts in Minneapolis as an initiative to develop strategies to address racial isolation and achieve integration among Minneapolis and surrounding school districts. And whereas the foundation for this unique collaboration among metro school districts, a joint powers agreement was crafted and agreed to setting out the rules by which this entity would be governed. And whereas any member may withdraw from WMEP Joint Powers Board and cause representatives to cease to function in such capacity upon written notice given to the chair of the WMEP Joint Powers Board. And whereas such notice is to be accompanied by a certified copy of an appropriate resolution of the individual members' school board authorizing and directing such withdrawal from the WMEP Joint Powers Board. And whereas such withdrawal resolution shall be given on or before December 30th of a given school year. And whereas the withdrawal shall be effective on June 30th of the same school year in which the notice was given, therefore be it resolved because the district believe WMEP at this time no longer addresses the current needs of the Columbia Heights Public Schools, the district hereby withdraws from WMEP. Therefore be it also resolved that Columbia Heights Public Schools will continue to support inter-district collaborations to end the racial achievement gaps through alternative options or models. Discussion.
Just a quick note here, we actually, in this resolution, have education spelled incorrectly at the top. Resolution approving withdrawal.
Missing an "i."
Education's missing.
We can certainly correct it.
Yeah, it's just a minor thing. Ted usually catch that stuff.
I missed that one. I wrote it.
He always, he always catches it. You missed a comma.
I was, if I may, Chair Larkin, since we're at the discussion part, we had a hearty presentation of this last week, but since then, we had a meeting with the chair, the vice chair, the executive director and four of the superintendents, of which I am one, in this room actually, last week, to talk about possible transformations or adjustments to the WMEP model and some of the issues concerning that. At that time, Chair Volma said that he was expecting more than one or multiple letters to land on the, with intent to leave, to land on the WMEP desk. And he said that he could certainly see what the way the deadlines are, that people would want to call the question particularly and keep their options open particularly if they were feeling that they were not having a value added or getting their value out of WMEP. One of the things that he did say is that he thought that it would be also good if people would, once their letters were on the desk and accepted, also take part in discussions January through April. Facilitated discussions to see if any of those districts might change their minds if situations were different. And so I wanted to add that because I know it was a point of conversation at the table last time we met, whether it was fair to WMEP to, to say we're leaving and then not at the end. And so I am thinking that there are going to be many districts in the West Metro that will be having this discussion. And right before I came in, I received an email and I, maybe Member Landwear did too because it was to the Joint Powers Board, it just came out. And it was from Kim Ellison from, she represents the Minneapolis Board of Education, she's the vice chair. And she just wanted the Joint Powers Board to know that they would be withdrawing and they had voted to withdraw tonight from WMEP. So I wanted to give you the most current information that we have, so when you make your, your decision tonight, you're abreast of where we are at least currently.
And just a recap of last week and I'll see if I can get it fairly close and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but currently, the amount that we're paying per student is versus the value and the services that we're receiving from WMEP are, are not fiscally responsible at this point. And the current model that we're plugged into at WMEP currently does not allow the flexibility for us to be able to find the services that would benefit us and make it more of a value, you know, to stay within WMEP. And that if we don't put this letter on the table by the 30th, we are in essence locked into WMEP until would be June 30th of 2017, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So 18 months. So by taking action tonight, if in fact that's what the board decides to do, we're allowing ourselves to look at our options, continue to chat, you know, through January through April, but still at the same time, give us the ability to look for services that are better value and provide better for our students and our staff. Chair recap?
I would say that's very fair, yes.
I'm just wondering if we had any more information about what services were actually going to be offered, because that was the one thing I didn't hear, is I didn't hear what we would actually be getting at all, you know, other than.
Well, Mr. Chair and members, if I might, in the PowerPoint that was presented the last time, they did give us their premier, which was the WMEP Services and Benefits. And I believe, is that in the packet tonight?
Yeah.
It's in your board book.
It's in the board book.
It's in the board book?
Where it starts, it was what they, it goes on for multiple pages and we analyze that, I think it was like two or three, if I'm thinking about it. And we took a look at what we were, what we would be, being able to access versus what they, the stated value and that is where we arrived at the decision that monetarily we, it would, it would not be fiscally responsible for the percentage of dollars that, for the programs. So that was one thing. The other, the other thing was that the $16 flat fee really is for the one model. And I think some of the consternation among the other districts is that they would like a lower fee. Northwest is at about eight, five to $8 and, and it's $8 for East Metro Integration District and we're at 16. And there's choice within their models. So you pay your base membership fee and then if you want to add on some of the other goods and services, you customize it to your district. And you also have an opportunity to say, "We would like to see this offered in the line of equity," because this is what we're working on, on the ground. And currently, we're just not seeing that kind of flexibility with the model as it's customized. Because if you remember, when they customized the model, there was ABC and D quadrants and the bulk of the districts either wound up in foundational A or just one step above it in B, which makes for a good three-year growth plan for WMEP, but it doesn't necessarily mean that there, people are anticipating or agreeing with that that's exactly where they're going to be in the growth plan. That help, Laura?
Yeah, I was just hoping, I mean, I kind of made my decision last week. I was actually hoping I would have something more to reflect on other than it still looks exactly the same. You got to buy it to see what's in it. And I'm not comfortable with that.
Any questions or comments?
I guess I would just say, if, if Minneapolis truly is withdrawing, they by far hold the land share of, of students for the funding for WMEP. So that would be devastating to WMEP. I don't know how WMEP would function if Minneapolis indeed pulled out. So, so we may be looking at an organization that's not going to survive if, if that's really what happens in, you know, when we get to June 30th, so. I also want to say that I think that the model, the model of WMEP was not to, was to be customized. And I don't know what the disconnect is between the vision of WMEP and what's actually what we're hearing from Superintendent Kelly. But that's the model I've been supporting and pushing on, on the WMEP board. If that's not what is going to happen, then, then that's not certainly within the vision that I had when I signed on with WMEP. So I'm sorry it's not happening that way.
And I don't know if, Mr. Chair and members, if Director Stenwick wants to talk about it from a WREP standpoint, but would you say it's customized and co-created and co-constructed or not?
At this, to date, we, there has not been any co-creating or co-constructing. It's been the folks on WREP really listening and hearing about some of the vision, but what actually, some of the specifics about how it would look for each district, what does it mean to be in quadrant A specifically? I couldn't tell you. And that's pretty different from the past where it was a lot more collaborative and we did have discussions around where should the money go and what, what's going to give us the biggest bang for our buck and what will be most effective for the districts? It's, we haven't had that yet since July.
I guess I will continue to push for, for that in, you know, the remaining time that we, that we're members of the Joint Powers Board, the remaining six months. I do also want to say, I do have to take some exception on, you know, the resolution when it talks about racial achievement, ending the racial achievement gap. You know, I'm opposed to racism and the achievement gap should be ended for whatever, all students, regardless of race or skin color. So I think that's the goal of, of WMEP and hopefully that's the goal of, of our district as well. I think that's what our vision, is consistent with our vision.
Anybody else? If you would, please call the rule.
Louis.
Aye.
Landwear.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is the, next action item is the Community Education Compensation Schedule.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Tonight, we're here to present the Community Education Compensation Schedule, which includes mini-adventure staff, adventure club, ECFE non-licensed staff, and then any aquatics if we hire for aquatics programming. These were originally left off the other list that went through a couple of weeks ago. The increase will be commensurate to what the teachers got and is the same as the other non-affiliated groups. So we're here seeking approval of this.
Motion to move that forward.
Someone?
Ted?
Second.
Molly, thank you. Discussion?
I would just say, traditionally, we've been in, these groups have been in step with the teachers' pay raises and if you, you know, am I correct on that?
It is commensurate to what the teachers received.
And that's been the, the past practice? Right, so.
Here no further discussion, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the principal contract.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We were here to ask for approval of the principals' contract. It was included in the board packet. There's very minimal changes to it, a small increase to the 403B. We removed some severance language since nobody qualifies for that. I'm trying to think if there's anything else big. It's a three-year contract. The principals have voted and approved it, so it's just up to the board tonight. So we're here tonight seeking approval on the principals' contract to cover school years 2015 through 2018.
Okay, good. Motion to move that forward.
Someone?
Ted's looking for a second.
Second.
Laura, thank you. Discussion?
I had a question. Is this contract still an at-will contract for the principals? I didn't see any language in that.
They are not at-will.
Okay, so they're, we're bound to them for three years?
If they reach tenure.
Okay.
If they reach tenure, they're public employees and it's an association, not a union, but it's, they're not at-will employees.
Is that under state law then?
Yes.
Okay, they receive tenure?
Yes.
Okay. So we couldn't contract away those rights anyway?
No.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I do also want to say that, you know, the salaries are over $100,000 for each, just to let the community be aware of that. And is that competitive, would you say, with, with districts as far as principal salaries? Do we know?
Yes, we did a salary survey of the 21 districts in the metropolitan area before we looked at our salary ranges and it is competitive. We're never at the top, but we're not at the bottom.
Would you say we're in the middle then or where would you say?
I would say that the APs are more toward the top and that the, depending upon if they're elementary, middle school, or secondary principals, that they would be in the middle.
Okay. Is there reasoning for having the APs towards the top?
That happened in the last round of contract negotiations. Because they were so far below that we tried to bring everybody up so that they would be competitive. And so they're competitive within the AP ranks, not competitive within the principal ranks.
Okay. And what determines the salary range? I mean, I'm not, is it, is it to give the administration flexibility on pay that there's a range for each?
It's an, it's an agreed upon, Mr. Chair and members, I'm sorry, I forgot my manners. It's, it's an agreed upon range that gives flexibility both on entering staff. And for instance, if you would get a very veteran high school principal, you wouldn't necessarily start them at step one. But if you got a brand-new elementary principal who had no experience, they may be lower in the range. There are three steps, or it takes three years in the range for people to be acknowledged, but it is flexibility. It's a matter of flexibility and, and based on experience and the principals and the district agree on those things in contract negotiations.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
I guess just in the, for future, I'd like to see some performance incentives other than, you know, keeping students, retaining, or attracting students. I do, I know they'd get a bonus for that, so to speak, and then retaining them throughout the year, but other than that, I didn't see any other performance incentives in terms of academic performance or anything like that.
Anything else? Here no further discussion, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, guys. This meeting is adjourned at 7:50.